We'll now call the meeting to order for 2007 Iredell County Commission Meeting. Call on Mr. Johnson for the invocation.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, once again, it's our privilege to serve you and to serve the folks of this county. I pray we'll be worthy of the trust that you've placed in us, and we'll honor the position you've given us, and we'll be of faithful service to you, and, Lord, that we'll serve your people, and that we'll do what is honorable in your sight and is for their good. But we realize our own deficiencies, Lord, and our inability to do that on our own. We ask for your wisdom and your strength to do those matters that would please you and be of best benefit to them. We ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Let us stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call on Mr. Mashburn for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before I do the adjustments to the agenda, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce to you Sandra Gregory. Ms. Gregory, Sandra is our new HR Director. She started her work with us on September the 23rd. Since she started, she's been very active in getting out and visiting the different departments, the department heads, and kind of seeing how we do things, and I'm sure she's going to bring a lot of expertise and experience with her. So I just wanted to welcome Sandra here, and hopefully, before the evening, you may have an opportunity to talk to her and meet her, okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
With that, we will get into the adjustments, and, Mr. Chairman, I have no adjustments to the agenda this evening.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Questions, concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman, as presented.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead and motion. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Presentation of special recognition awards. Presentation of any of an application, file, Iredell County Attorney Douglas Fox. Is there Mr. Lambert in the audience?
I don't think Mr. Lambert's here, but I think Mr. Fox is here.
Mr. Fox is here? Okay.
Then maybe I'm wrong about that.
I don't see.
Tracy, I apologize, it was on the agenda that both of them would be here, so if they come in during the meeting, we'll just delay, if that's okay with you, and do it at the time.
No, fine, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Johnson's got presentation proclamation flyer.
Okay. I'm going to ask the Fire Marshal to come forward, Mr. Riley Thompson-Fiedwood. I'm going to present this proclamation, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
I think I could talk about that question. This is a proclamation of fire prevention. Whereas Iredell County Commission ensures the safety and security of homeless living, working, and living in the town, and whereas fires are a serious public safety concern of locally enhanced home security, we provide this flyer. There is nearly 3,000 people dying each year in North Carolina as a result of home fires, and whereas roughly two-thirds of home fire deaths involve families, fires with no smoke alarms or unworking smoke alarms present, and whereas worky-smoke alarms took the chance of dying, we report the fire half, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association recommends to use one smoke alarm on every level of the home, including the basement, outside all swimming areas and all bathrooms, and whereas the public, whereas the community without the force of smoke alarm installation remains in search of consent to stay for increasing public safety from home fires, whereas Iredell County first responders are dedicated to the use of purpose of home fires and home fire deaths to give the community the proper education, and whereas Iredell County residents are responsible for public education measures and are able to take personal responsibility to increase their safety from fire potential in their homes, and whereas the fire prevention league October 3rd to the 19th, thousands of people, the fire prevention league throughout Iredell County, and earns all citizens to protect their homes and families by using the traditionally high-temperature measures, the fire prevention league, thousands of people, and supports the media activities and efforts of Iredell County Fire Department versus the service. In this way, we have thousands of people in Iredell County Board Committee to fight fire.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Thank you for all the support that you've given to the children's homes throughout the past 20 years that I'm working on right now as Executive Director, and for the past 38 years that we've served children that are in DSS custody as victims of abuse and neglect. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask your help in any manner that you may be so pleased to do, to help us in our efforts to win this $250,000 grant through the Pepsi Refresh Project. It doesn't require any money. It only requires, or we enjoin you, to help us by texting a vote via your cellphone and then going online to our website, www.chomesofiredell.net, and placing a vote each day throughout the month of October. We've been trying to get in this grant since May, and by the grace of God, we did that on September 1st, so our voting started on October 1st. Currently, out of 350 similar projects that entered this grant, we are ranked 28th. So that's good, as far as we're concerned, but what we need is everyone in our community, outside of our community, if you have family, groups, associations that you belong to, get them to join in and vote for us each day, because it's not the project in and of itself, it's the vote. This $250,000 will be used toward our transitional living program for youth that are facing aging out of DSS care without complete education, social, and employment skills. We want to bring that $250,000 to Iredell County to work for these kids. The only difference that they have between going out into an adult life that is uncertain as far as having a stable living environment, having employment, not going into jail or situations that are not appropriate, that we would not want our own kids to be in, the only difference is seated in the seats here in this community. We appreciate every opportunity that we would have to be out in the community to advertise this, because this is money that we want to work for Iredell County, because the children we serve one day be sitting in these seats. I've said that before, and I'll probably say it till I don't have any breath, or as long as I'm Director of the Children's Homes of Iredell County. But if you have any questions, I do have some flyers and some instruction sheets that I can leave back here if that's allowed, and if there's anyone that has any questions, they can go on our website that's still under construction, because we have made some changes. There's a lot of talk about branding, and that's what we're trying to do, because the work that we've done for 38 years is to build this community and make it stronger. The youth that we're serving today will one day either be our leaders, or they will be in our jails, and that's not what we want. So if you have any questions, you can easily get my information, and thank you so much for allowing me to come up here and speak before you. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Speeds before she leaves? Do you need any, thank mercifulness?
Well, if we could put our little vote thing on the county website, that would be great.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I'm understanding what you're requesting is that we be able to put on our website a link to that vote, so that anyone who goes on our website, employees or the public, or anyone that goes on our website, would be able to do that.
Yes, it more or less says that you all are in favor or in support. I know that there's some reality to my belief that if something comes out and shows that it is, it is about.
I personally don't know of a problem with that, and Daniel's sitting up there in the crow's nest, and I'm not sure if you can answer that now, Daniel. Do you foresee a problem with us being able to technically be able to do that? Okay, so we don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
We can make county employees aware that they can vote.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Speeds.
So I'm taken by that, that you're in agreement with allowing us to go ahead and place that on our website.
You need a motion?
No, if everybody's agreeable, that's fine.
Okay, we will now enter the public hearing. And I'm going to call on, is Mr. Smith here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I come before you tonight to request your assistance with the industrial grant program. This is for a company that is considering our community for a new industrial location. This is a privately-held U.S. company with multiple locations. It's a plastics operation that would create 36 full-time jobs over two years with the potential for more in the future. This would be a new investment, taxable investment of $4.25 million in land and building, and another $3.5 million on machinery and equipment, for a total investment of $7.75 million. Currently, as we're well aware, the Iredell unemployment rate is above 11%, and we want to do everything we can for projects like this to be very competitive. My request for you tonight would be to use the industrial grant program from Iredell County on this taxable investment, which would be approximately $126,665 over a five-year period, based on that taxable investment.
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
I have one, it's not related directly to this specific proposal, but the state had a tier system that was used to determine how much help that the state was going to give to specific counties. So-called high-wealth counties got less help than low-wealth counties, and Iredell County was always, always ended up with the short end of that stick. Given that our unemployment rate unfortunately is hovering around that 11% rate, do you anticipate a change in our tier level?
Thank you for that question. As Mr. Mashburn is aware, that's something that I've been working on for the past year and a half or so, and continue to work on, because it is something that puts us at an unfair advantage as it relates to a number of other counties across North Carolina. That particular program from the state is based on a number of factors, one of which is property tax. And one of the things about our community is certainly we're, it's fortunate that we have a lot of very nice homes on Lake Norman, but some of that type of property typically tips these numbers in the wrong direction as it relates to the tier system. One of the things about the tier system, too, that, again, just with the way our particular county is set up, it's a 50-mile-long county, and so the southern part of the county probably should be a Tier 3 with its proximity to Charlotte, but as you move north, it doesn't really make sense, because right now, that tier system puts Troutman, Statesville, and North Iredell at a disadvantage to many other communities immediately close by. Trying to end this long answer would be, right now, I don't see any relief, but what I'm doing is talking, there are six or seven other counties across North Carolina that, in my view, are in the same unfair disadvantage, such as Moore County with Pinehurst, and Chatham County with Siler City. Some of these are also considered high-wealth counties like Wake and Mecklenburg that really should not be. So we're continuing to work on that, but this is something that'll have to be changed from the General Assembly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions?
Thank you.
If there's no questions, I will open the floor up now. To anyone who wishes to speak, or against, and in favor of this request, I'd be glad to listen to you at this time. And if you come up, just state your name and the mic. Okay? If we have no one, then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we grant this request and extend the incentive in the amount of $126,675 over a five-year period, based on an investment of $7,750,000 investment in Iredell County contingent upon an agreement being executed within 180 days.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I need questions, go ahead and motion. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Four ayes, one no. Mr. Ron Smith, is he here? You in the place of Mr. Smith.
Mr. Ben Stockleather will make the presentation on the next item, sir.
It's a pleasure to be with you gentlemen tonight. I am presenting on behalf of the Planning Department. What we have before you tonight is an administrative rezoning. The reason for that is that Iredell County owns all of the land in question this evening. We had two main reasons for wanting to rezone this property to M1, which is light industrial. The first reason being that it's kind of a hodgepodge of different uses in zoning districts, because the city took this in in an annexation to allow multifamily development to access infrastructure. That fell through. The county then bought the land for landfill development in the future. The other reason is that we feel like, in order to be upfront with the citizens of the county and folks who are looking at this area for homes or businesses, the zoning district needs to reflect a landfill-type use. While, even though we could use, we could do the landfill in any zoning district, because it's a governmental entity, we feel that by placing it in the M1 zoning district, it will give the residents a heads-up that that's what's going in there. This slide is the current zoning districts. You have a multifamily with the city of states up here, and everything in Crosshatch was previously in the city jurisdiction, which they have released back to us either through legislative means or through local government meetings. This is the aerial photograph. You'll notice it also encompasses what is currently Twin Oaks Golf Course and some land down here that the landfill looks to expand to in the future. An important thing to point out here is that this expansion is, this expansion is five years away. They're looking at some expansion here that's about 15, and this is 25 to 30 years away. So we're talking about some pretty long-range plans here. This is the Future Land Use Plan. We feel that it meets the 2030 Horizon Plan, based on the fact that the Iredell County-controlled portion is considered an industrial flex or office employment center, and everything that was in the city's planning area on their plan was designated as an institutional use, which the landfill would fit into that category. This is a site plan for the landfill. Like I said, Phase 5 and 6 are roughly five years out. Phase 7 and 8 are about 15 years, and then the golf course, which is actually up here, is 25 years out. There would be a 300-foot buffer around all properties that's required by state law. There would not be any hazardous waste or liquid waste stored there. While we are proposing a straight M1 district, which means you have to consider all the uses in the M1 district, it won't be really useful for anything but a landfill after the landfill starts to expand, so. We also have some photos here of the area. This is on the north side of the property, looking at the landfill. It's such a large rezoning that it's kind of hard to get pictures out of the aerial photographs really the best way, but this is looking down Twin Oaks Road in front of the current landfill. This is looking at the landfill from Twin Oaks Road, and then this is the baling facility that you have up there currently. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are there any questions? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If not, this is the public hearing, and you may come up front and state your name at this time, and ask whatever questions you like.
My name is Carolyn Morrison, and I'm one of the property owners in that vicinity. And so the question that I have is, once that land has been rezoned, then there's nothing I can do with that land. Is there anything I can, I can't sell the land, or because the land is going to be eventually used for the landfill? Am I right?
I'm not aware that we were zoning her property.
No, sir, we're not. It's just land owned by Iredell County.
Okay, but I received a letter indicating that, you know, I have land in the area, so just the Iredell County land will be considered M1 land?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Are there any additional questions from anyone?
Yes, even though this is Iredell County land, but from what you can see, it would just put you in a situation, you know, where, you know, where the landfill, where it be, where your property wouldn't even be, you know, any value. I mean, that's, you know, that's what I'm seeing, even though that you guys would own the land and, you know, bring the landfill, you know, what, I mean, does not take a Philadelphia lawyer to see that.
Mr. Stockleather, can you address that? I'm not sure.
Ma'am, is your concern that the landfill's going to be adjoining to the property that you own?
That it's going to bring down the value of our property? And that what are we going to be, what are we going to be able to do with our property once, you know, the landfill is there?
Yeah. You'll still be able to use your land the same way that you currently can. It won't affect the way you use your land. There's a 300-foot buffer off of the property line that the landfill has to maintain. Nothing can go in there, and that's a state law that the state does that in order to protect property owners from any kind of off-site stuff. So that's why that buffer's there. It should not interfere with your land in any way, and this rezoning certainly doesn't change the zoning on your property in any way, shape, or manner.
But I think this, from the other meeting that we went, which you guys had planned to put multiple homes, you know, in there, and after, you know, that seemed as possible to, I mean, this situation.
Right, the plan for the multiple homes was actually a private developer. It wasn't the county. The land then came up for sale, and the county bought it for landfill expansion eventually. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Any questions from the commissioners? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request for the land on Twin Oaks Road from R8 to M1 as requested.
Okay, any questions, go ahead and motion. If not, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I say it. I close the public hearing. Call on Mr. Mashburn for a minute for the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item we have is we have Dr. Kenny Miller here, representing the Iredell Statesville School System for a request on release of lottery funds.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, Iredell Statesville Schools has lottery funds available in the 2009-10 year. This is not the current 2010-11 year. At the end of the year, we had some additional funds that were available. We would like to request application for those funds to reimburse the school system's fund balance. We typically keep our projects going by using fund balance, and then we draw down our lottery funds to reimburse our fund balance. So I think you have some projects that we paid out of fund balance currently in front of you, so we would ask that we be given permission to apply for those funds. Be glad to answer any questions.
If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions, go ahead and motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is an update on the 2006 Scattered Side Housing Grant. The county is eligible, I think it's every four years, Donald, and correct me if I'm wrong, for a grant to do home repairs, and we contract with the Statesville Housing Authority to carry out that program in Iredell County. Mr. Donald Hicks is here to make a request and to call for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn, and thank you, Chairman and fellow board. We'd like to first thank you for allowing the Statesville Housing Authority to contract to help the citizens of Iredell County. It was more than just the city of states, so we actually helped from Mooresville all the way to Union Grove, so we helped 10 families. We're requesting a variance, because we originally planned for 15 homes to be worked on. Through the process of implementing the program, two of the families' members deceased, two members actually refused or didn't want any additional work, and one other actually signed and didn't want any more work. So we have 10 homes that we actually completed with the $400,000, and we have to request a change, because we didn't complete the whole 15 homes. But out of the $400,000, we used $282,000 to renovate the homes, and $40,000, which was supposed to be used for emergency housing, DCA changed the rules, and we applied for it in 2007. And from 2007 to 2010, the rules had changed to where we couldn't actually go in and replace an HVAC system or replace the roof. It actually had to be a repair to that existing, and so they kind of consulted with us, and we got with the county, and we decided to kind of act away from the emergency assistance. And we had a successful closeout last Wednesday. Susan Blumenstein and Deb Alfred was there with us, with the DCA, and they reviewed the files, they reviewed the homes that we completed, and they gave us approval to go ahead and come before you to request a closeout public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Hicks?
I'd like to ask one. Are these funds just used on privately-owned property?
Yes, sir, correct.
All right, follow-up. Then do the owners have to live in a house? What I'm trying to get at is, are houses owned by someone, a landlord, and is it being fixed up for a tenant?
Right, no, it has to be actually home ownership.
By the one living in the house?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Correct, thank you.
If not, I'll entertain a motion for this request.
Move to grant this request, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions, go ahead and motion. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, the next item is a request for purchases of some fire apparatus. Actually, there's two or three things here. Actually, there's two or three things here. The first one has to do with a schedule and the other is a purchase of fire apparatus. And I'm going to call on Garland Clor, who is our deputy fire marshal, to make the initial presentation. And I think Frank Phillips is here to provide some financial information if the board has questions about that.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, the next two items that you have, C and D, kind of run back-to-back and parallel with each other. The first item is a request from the Fire Tax Board. For years since I've been involved with the Fire Tax Board, there's always been decisions on how we're going to purchase fire apparatus for the fire departments in the county. The Fire Tax Board asked for some input from the fire departments in the county and they put together a committee that put together a formula or a schedule on how these fire apparatus should be replaced, which gives us a better spending of county money that comes through the, the fire tax funds that are there. So, our first, first agenda item there is the, what we call a 25-10 purchase schedule. And this purchase schedule will allow the county Fire Tax Board to pretty much automatically schedule out when equipment is to be purchased, allows them time to, to plan and have money available to them for this apparatus to be purchased. And then the second item, D, to bring us all up to even play, a playing field that's kind of even for all the fire departments, is that if we allow or you approve this 25-10 fire apparatus purchase, then the next item would be that we're going to bring all the players up to an even status where they would not need any additional purchases until this schedule is actually in place and this schedule could be followed by the Fire Tax Board. So, what I'm going to do is bring up Frank Phillips. He's the chairperson of the Iredell County Fire Tax Board, which you guys are aware, and Mr. Tim Moore, and president of Iredell County Firemen's Association, and is also the chief of Wayside Fire Department. In the audiences, we have a few members, the chiefs and some representatives from Trinity, South Iredell, West Iredell, Harmony, and Lake Norman Fire Department for any questions that may pop up.
I'm Frank Phillips with the Fire Tax Board. We had asked the Firemen's Association to bring forth a proposal for truck replacements. They have done that. They are still working on that proposal. I think the final proposal should be coming forth hopefully later this month, perhaps even to November, but they're going to make the proposal in October. And what we would like for you to do is, is review this, take a look at it, look for your input on it, and I think we'll just let Tim show the presentation. The Fire Tax Board is in support of having a replacement schedule for vehicles. It's a, it's a large dollar outlay and we're trying to do the very best we can with the taxpayers' money.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. We were asked to put together a truck funding formula for the volunteer fire departments in order to maintain our ISO ratings based upon the schedule of a 25-10 replacement. In the presentation, you'll actually see that we have two funding formulas, but the 25-10 is what was presented and was adopted by the Fire Tax Board. As we all know, these apparatus are very expensive to put in a fire station. What you see before you is a formula for a pumper tanker, a ladder service company, brush trucks, medical vehicles, and command response vehicles. At this time, we're only, the county's only funding $350,000 for a pumper tanker combination and technically those trucks are running about $400,000 to $469,000 now. But we base this formula on $350,000 going for each apparatus. What we would like, and what we have presented is in order to maintain our ISO ratings, you'll see that a pumper tanker, three are required in each main station. And that is to make sure that you have your pump capacity and also a way to deliver water to the fire scene once you arrive. There's also a ladder service company that's required under DOI ratings, brush trucks, that's a municipal, multi-purpose vehicle. Also, we're looking at medical four-wheel-drive vehicles, which are not ambulances, it'll be a QRV-type deal just for first responders, also a command response. Based on one station, we're looking at approximately $1.325 million to put those apparatus in the departments. And based on the 25-10 replacement, it'd be $584,000 that would be needed to go to a department in order to keep up their trucks. For a substation, all thing that's required there would be one pumper, two pumper tanker service trucks at a rate of $350,000 each for $700,000 based on 25-year replacement, which is $168,000. In this, we also have been working with Lake Norman Volunteer Fire Department to try to keep everybody on an equal playing field, to get them what they need as well, so that we can all play in the sandbox together. And with that, we've come up with them, this would be their special needs. A pumper tanker, be three of them, an engine ladder, which would be one, a brush truck of one, a medical response vehicle of one, a command response vehicle of one, a fire rescue boat, and also a pontoon rescue boat. That would bring them to needing approximately $99,400 per year to maintain their equipment in their station. This would be the total funding in the county departments. If you operate a main station in a substate, in a substation, you would actually achieve a little bit more money each year to maintain those apparatus that's required. The departments with two stations would receive $86,400 per year and those with one station would be $58,400, with Lake Norman being of $99,400, which would come to a grand total of $851,400 needed per year to fund the apparatus formula. That is approximately one penny in the tax base. This was the 25-year plan, which was not voted on that night, that we did go with the 25-10 by the Fire Tax Board, so we'll skip through these two slides. Okay, any questions on the fund, the funding formula before we move into the next item? Is that okay to go and move into there, or do you want to do that?
Can I, can I ask you about just some of the assumptions?
Yes, sir.
And, and first of all, we appreciate, you know, everybody who volunteers for the fire service, so don't interpret our questions as a, a lack of confidence in your decision making. I'm just, we're just trying to understand kind of how these numbers came up. Out of curiosity, I mean, you've got a replace, replacing vehicles at 25 years.
Yes, sir.
And there's always the, the issue of reliability and, of course, if my house is on fire and you put the keys in the truck, I want it to start and I want it to get to my house as quick as I can. And at some point, the age of the truck starts to, to, to play into that. I understand it. How did you come up with 25 years? I mean, why wasn't it 23? Why wasn't it 28? Did we just round off to the nearest five? I mean, kind of what was the logic there?
Do it.
The replacement schedule in the past, up until about five years ago, was 20 years. Fire trucks will last that long when they're cared for. They're expensive, but on a mileage basis, they all have very low mileage. But trucks are maintained. With today's cost on trucks and the way they are manufactured, they'll last 25 years. We have many trucks that have lasted 25 years and longer. So, it's, it's not a number we pulled out of the air. In fact, we've been using 25-year replacement schedules for the past maybe four or five years.
If, if a truck is not having any maintenance, is not having maintenance issues and it's 25 years old, are we going to replace it anyway because it's 25 years old? Or will we keep it in service until, you know, we start to look at, gee whiz, maybe, maybe, you know, it's a wise decision to get rid of it? I mean, we've done this with our county vehicles. You know, we used to, to replace them at X number of miles and, and then we just said, okay, we're going to replace vehicles when it, it doesn't make common sense to keep it.
Well, that's actually what the departments are doing now.
Okay.
More often than not, when a truck is replaced, it's still maintained in service as long as it's a serviceable truck. It's a, it's a backup pumper, it can be a backup tanker. So, they are maintained and to a point that the upkeep on it does not justify keeping it any longer. But to answer your original question, we've been on a 25-year schedule.
Okay. And then finally, this, this, these funding formulas, whether you're looking at, you gave several different, you know, some are $530,000 a year, some are, one was $584,000 a year. I mean, is, is our current funding formula that we have for the, for the fire service, would that take, would that handle this? Or if we approve this in concept, are we, are we basically stepping into, to, to needing a higher fire tax?
We would need a, a higher fire tax.
Okay, so in order to, so if we approve this, then the, then the current fire tax will, at, at these property evaluations that we have right now will be insufficient?
That is our thought.
Okay. And how much more would you need to do this?
Well, we don't know what the current reevaluation is.
Assuming that the revow was the same.
We have looked, it would probably be an additional penny and a half. It could be two pennies.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a statement?
Sure.
Oh, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the ISO rating for pumpers and tankers basically are based on a 24, 25-year cycle and they no longer get credit for those pump capacities if they exceed the 25 years.
Okay, all right.
So, that, that drives the 25-year replacement so they can maintain the ISO rating with that.
Okay, thank you. That, that makes a lot of sense.
Ken Journey, who's been helping us with this, would like to make a comment as well.
Just want to point out whether to clarify that or not, just to maintain the minimum...
Ken, can you come closer to the mic so we can record it?
Just to maintain the minimum accreditation for a fire department, each station must have at least a pumper and a tanker. Union Grove approved to us, and that includes substations. Union Grove approved to us, they got a six rating with three pumper tanker combinations. So, that's what we've, we've, and it's going to take that. And then some type of, of, they can use different variations to achieve the, the ladder service company. We looked at Lake Norman with over 5,000 homes and the new ISO standards, which will come into effect next year, we, they're the only one we budgeted for a ladder truck. But when we use these three pumper tanker combinations, we're looking at, you know, if we can replace a truck every eight years, we're gonna, we're gonna be, basically having trucks that function as a pumper or tanker in most cases. And so, we will have a fire department that's got one that's one to eight years old, one that's eight to 16 years old, one that's nine to 25 years old, and, and have a rotation. Through these ratings, some of our fire departments have proven that our most productive water haul apparatus are the, the large tankers. Central and Cool Springs have, in Lake Norman, have 3,000-gallon tankers. And those tankers really do help when achieving this water delivery, which is the 35% of the total ISO score. But this, these apparatus are not gold-plated. The only thing that's in there that's not required for our insurance rating purposes is a brush truck, which we've got to have, and the emergency response vehicles and that are not part of ISO standards, but it's something that we'd look to our fire departments to provide. But we've broken all this out in detail for the Fire Commission and we're going to break everything out to try to answer all questions for them. Any concerns that they have? We presented a basic budget to them last month. They asked us to revise some things. We're going to represent it. We'll probably tweak it two or three more times on the final budget before we, our goal was to present this to you at the winter budget workshop where you had a time to sit down and absorb everything. But the, the Fire Commission sort of holds these guys' feet to the fire and they, they want questions answered and we try to go back and give them the details that they need to support, what they need. And we're trying to give them the information so they can make a informed recommendation to you folks.
Okay, so if I can just paraphrase what you said, and let's make sure I understand it right, is the number of vehicles that, the number of vehicles or apparatus that you're recommending, you're recommending based upon what the ISO standard is to, to get these better fire service ratings so that the homeowner's insurance for fire protection or whatever, that, that they get the best rating, but the, that's the minimum number of vehicles that the departments are required to have, that we're going to, that we retire them at 25 years, because if it's 26 years old, even though the department can use the vehicle, it doesn't count towards that insurance rating. Is that a correct statement?
An apparatus will count for an insurance rating so long as it met the NFPA standard at the time it was purchased by that department.
Well...
So, it would continue, it would, unless that's changed, has that changed?
Twenty-five years.
Beg your pardon?
I, I thought we were just told that at 25 years, it didn't count.
Okay, that, I may be wrong on that. Okay, NFPA may have changed that standard then.
Okay. When did they change that?
There's a new proposal that's out for 2000, for 2011, that's going to be a total overhaul of the NFPA 1901 for fire apparatus. So, we may even see that proposal actually drop to a 20-year replacement under the national standards. But we'll stay on the 25-year here locally.
ISO is making some changes that's going to make it more difficult for these fire departments to maintain these six ratings, but the, the good news is, is they, all but one of our fire departments has, has achieved it and we will adapt to the changes. And I think another good thing is, is five years ago, we had the five cents in fire tax that saved homeowner, homeowners the equivalent of 10 cents in fire tax, or 10 cents in insurance savings. And now that's, that extra penny, six cents, has saved the equivalent of about 25 cents in, in taxes. And I don't know, there's a lot of other things that we'll, we'll cover with the Fire Commission. And just any questions you've got about this thing, and, and we'll break it down in as much detail. We want you to feel comfortable that this money's being well-spent. It's not, it's not gold-plated. It's just, just one thing I want to clarify, one pumper and one tanker, that's, that's all that's required for each station. But Harmony, for example, is required to have six engines for their district. We can get by with three. Union Grove is required to have like five and get by with two. But it's more important for our fire departments to have a few pieces of quality apparatus that they can get out the door than to have a whole barn full of apparatus that can't get out the door anyway. If we've got fewer pieces, we can replace it on a reasonable schedule like this and that's what we're looking to do. And we'll try to answer any reservations you have about this to show that's, that's justified.
If I, if I could state it another way, because this is the way I understand it. Look, let me preface my remarks by saying this. Those of you who've been coming to these meetings for a while know that I have a, a bad habit of gloating when I'm right. So, I'll be big enough to admit when I was wrong. As you know, I, I voted against the one cent in the increase in fire tax, quite frankly, because I was skeptical that you fellows would be to pull it off. But Mr. Journey keeps coming by the store reminding me how much more money the taxpayers have saved on insurance, and I think that's his polite way of reminding me that I was wrong. But he's always smiling when he does it, so I don't take offense at it.
You did vote for that fire tax.
Well, eventually, yeah, eventually. So, what I'm hearing you, you say, gentlemen, is that we gave you the penny and you've lowered the fire tax. The, well, you, I mean, you lowered the fire insurance premiums. Thank you. So, to maintain that rating going forward, then these are the apparatus that you're going to have to have in order to maintain that insurance rating. So, the original deal, Mr. Robertson, I, I think you crafted the motion, so you can remind me if I'm wrong, we increased the fire tax a penny to be... can remind me if I'm wrong, we increased the fire tax a penny to begin to get you there, and you folks made us aware at that time that it would take additional increases to get better ratings or, or maintain ratings in the future. So the original agreement was, I think, was up to two additional cents on the fire tax, is that right? After the one.
I don't remember what, what-
Well, the deal, yeah, I-
That was actually-
Yeah, the deal was one, one cent, and if you got it there, then we would take a look at additional. So-
Right, yes.
Up to two cents. So what I'm hearing you say is that you've performed, for the most part, I think you got, what, one or two departments still to be rated, Mr. Phillips? Is that right?
We've just had three, uh, this past week.
Right.
They've seen the paper, Trinity, Wayside, and Cool Springs.
Okay, but I think you got one or two more, don't you?
We got one, Central. Yeah, Central.
I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just making sure. So, well, that's close enough to fulfilling the agreement, in my mind, that you've acted in good faith. So to, to maintain this rating, you're actually asking for no more additional money than what you planned in the first, the one additional cent to come, and then another if need be. So based on your projections, you say, you know, one more cent, and then one and a half to two cents, that would fall within the parameters of what-
That's correct.
Okay, okay, well, I mean-
And we are, of course, concerned also that the, uh, state is, is increasing their requirements.
Well, and I know insurance companies, they're probably over there tonight doing things to make it more difficult to you. But I congratulate you on your success and the fulfillment of your obligation, and I think you've done a, a great job. And because you're, you're acting on the basis of the previous agreement, then I don't have any trouble supporting this going forward. I, I do think we would be in error if, if we don't proceed with some degree of, of concern over the state of the economy and future revenues, but we can work that as we go along. But, uh, I'll, again, I congratulate you, and I don't see any problem with what you've got going forward.
Well, we, we thank you for your support.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Can you, just for clarification, in my mind, though, what, did, did he say that you, you intend to continue with this plan to have a net savings to the taxpayer? In other words, when you add the tax-
We have completed this.
And subtract the insurance savings, the taxpayer continues to benefit under this plan?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We raise the tax and the insurance agent gets to lower his-
Right.
His rate, so we don't get to hold both ends of that stick, unfortunately.
That's okay. I have no, no other question.
The homeowner is, is the big winner in this program.
One more time, I'm sorry.
The homeowner is, is the big winner.
The, the, the other question that, that came up while you gentlemen were speaking is, the, the, the trucks come out of service at 25 years because the ISO rating, in other words, if, if they're 25 years old in a day, then they lose their ISO, their, their purpose as far as an ISO rating goes. Is that, did, did we ever-
No.
Finally established that's the case?
No, the trucks are still in service at 25 years if, if they've been cared for and-
But as far as the insurance company goes, they don't, they don't count for your rating?
Well, they do, well, yep.
Garland, you're the one that-
Yeah.
Opened this can of worms, Doug.
I talked to, uh, Chad with, with Cool Springs, and Chad was saying that I think the future of this, and, and I thought you were talking about the present side of it, too, was that when that 25-year mark goes, they gotta make a 3,500 gallon per minute water flow. And then if they got a 1,200 gallon per minute pumper that's lost that 25 years, then they're gonna be dropped down to, say, 2,300, and then end up-
Lose their grandfather status.
And then their, then their ISO rating is gonna go from a six back up to probably seven, or maybe possibly even a nine, which is going to cause the insurance rating to-
But if they originally met the new standard, then they could remain in service and still count for the ISO rating. Is that, that's what we're saying, is it?
Will count for reserve.
Until, until the new changes come out-
Yeah.
Like they're sitting there standing.
Right.
But it's, it's equally as likely that some enterprise and person will invent a more efficient pump 10 years from now, and then they'll raise the standards above what they are now. Is that a reasonable assumption?
That's reasonable. That's very reasonable. Now, as back to your question, Mr. Keel.
I'd like to just request, everybody talk-
Okay.
Into the mic, because we're not picking it up.
All right. Um, a 25-year pumper will no longer be able to be a frontline truck, so we would actually be losing that as a frontline engine. It would count as a reserve for, like, if one of your mainline engines goes down, but you would not get frontline credit for it after the 25 years.
Okay.
Which accounts for the 3,500 gallons.
Right, okay.
I'd like to ask, um, just, uh, say a hundred or $200,000 house, how much dollar-wise are we looking at the insurance company saving the homeowner?
On the average, on the average, a hundred thousand dollar, uh-
Home.
I'm getting my numbers right here. Uh, on the average, a 10-rated home, uh, homeowner premium is 10 times more than what the, uh, homeowner pays in fire tax. No, excuse me, excuse me. For every dollar that the homeowner pays in fire tax, his insurance premium is 10 times more than, is 10 times the fire tax. Uh, a 9-rated premium is eight times the fire tax. So the, the homeowner pays, saves $2 in insurance for every dollar he pays in fire tax. When you go to a 7-rated premium, saves another dollar and a half for every dollar he pays in fire tax. And when it drops to a 6, saves another dollar and a half for each dollar he pays in fire tax. So a 6-rated homeowner's premium, premium saves the homeowner, uh, about 25 to 30 cents in, equivalent of 35 cents and, 25 to 30 cents in fire tax. Does that, does that, I've got it on the chart.
Is someone monitoring the insurance companies, making sure they are lowering the, the policies for their-
Some insurance companies, when, I know when Ebenezer lowered their rating, we had a lot of homeowners that, uh, insurance companies sent rebate checks.
Okay.
Uh, others, the fire chiefs have to rally behind the homeowner and prove, you know, and, and the home, it's up to the homeowner to call his insurance agent and get that lower rating. So we need to get the word out to the public that you folks, and one thing that aggravates me about, more than anything about this thing, is that I, you see, all this gloom and doom about the budget, and the gloom and doom about this is bad and that's bad. What you folks have enabled these fire departments to do is save homeowners equivalent to 25 to 30 cents in property taxes, and I don't hear you, hear, hear you talking about the good things. We need to try every way in the world to get the message out to the homeowners of this county, throughout this county, that we have a program that is saving people the equivalent of half of their total property tax bill. And that is a big benefit for, uh, and we get one more fire department rerated, and we're gonna have the entire county, so, and Trautman's outside this district, but Trautman's gonna get rated next year, and we're gonna have this entire county rated 6. And I asked the inspector, is there another county in this state where all the fire departments have the, the best insurance rating? And he said, well, there's one, Hyde County. They have one fire department and a countywide water system.
Yeah.
We are like 17 fire departments and, you know, and a lot of places with no water. And these guys have made a, a remarkable achievement with the resources that they've got. So it's a big save, it's a big benefit. We need to, we need to get the word out.
I want to- To answer your question, uh, Mr. Mitchell, just in round dollars, a homeowner should save probably $250, $300 on a $200,000 home. Now, I can speak from experience that that's happened, to go from a 9-rated to a 6.
My mind's been going up every year at that moment.
Mr. Phillips, if I, I could, I want to make sure I understand what's being requested of us this evening. We actually have two memos, both of which is part of your presentation. This is my interpretation. And if we approve both of those, what you're asking us to do this evening is to approve this schedule for replacement of the trucks and authorize the expenditure of $1.4 million for the apparatus for South Iredale Trinity and two for Lake Norman. Is that, is that what?
Uh, yes. The, the second part that you're referring to on the 1.4 million would, would get us started on this schedule.
Okay.
Several departments are behind, and, but to, to get everyone on a, a level playing field to start with.
Actually, some of the items on, on this schedule you've got will be taken care of with a motion for approval, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Phillips, will you identify where all that money will come from, to do this?
For the 1.4 million?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, it's coming out of our, um, our retained funds in the fire tax, um, for the five cent and the one cent. We're taking, um, 374,000 out of our unreserved, uh, 400 and almost 35,000 out of reserve for trucks, and, uh, 590,000 out of the ratings increase for the one penny.
Are we leaving any money in those funds?
Yes. Well, uh, no, for ratings increase, that will go to zero, trucks will go to zero, and unreserved will drop to, uh, a $308,000 retained balance. We still have collectively 1.4 to 5 million.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
A second sheet on the handout leg shows you where they're proposing to take the funds from. Do you have that, Frank?
Pardon?
Do you have this spreadsheet that Ms. Blumenstein prepared?
Do.
Okay.
Our, our fire tax board made the recommendation where to, uh, take these funds from, and she has incorporated that in this schedule.
What will the fire boat do?
Mr. Clark?
Fire boat is with Lake Norman.
We're gonna get asked, so we might as well.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to y'all. Um, Mr. Robertson, answering your question, first and foremost, it'll take about 400 fire hydrants that are needed in our district out of the equation. So first and foremost, that, you know, sums it up. We're gonna be able to have high-volume water anyplace we can get that boat to. The boat, although it's worded as fireboat, it's also a rescue tool to be used day or night. The boat capacity is rated at 29.58 gallons per minute. Uh, throughout our district, we split half and half. Some of our district has hydrants, some of our district doesn't. This is gonna provide us high flow anyplace along the lake shore, or anyplace we can run a tanker shuttle or a large diameter hose to feed fire someplace else. Also has night vision, so we can do, you know, we're out on the lake really common, we've been commandeering boats for many years like pirates. Uh, we've got a foundation to help with this boat, and, uh, so it, fireboat kinda limits its capabilities. It's a, a dive rescue boat also.
Uh, I mean, I was just, just curious, uh, 'cause if you're, if you're on, depends on where the, the boat's located, uh, but if, if you've gotta go around Brawley Peninsula, I mean, that's, that's a pretty, pretty long haul.
We, we've been working real aggressively with Duke Power and, and many, many owners throughout the district, and also in conjunction with Cornelius Fire Department, who's also purchased the fireboat. We're trying to, we're trying to locate our fireboat. Currently, it's on the Reed Creek side, and we really want to get it put over to the main channel to be able to subsequently have a fireboat on each side of the Brawley School Road Peninsula. With a mutual aid agreement with Cornelius Fire, to be able to answer the calls at first until we get around to them, and then we can relieve them. And vice versa, we will offer our same assistance multi-county, and we're gonna go county to county and look for maintenance funds from all these counties, so Iredale County doesn't have to share the brunt of the expense.
Okay, so, so the purpose of this fire, of this boat is, is not just to fight fires for shoreline properties only? So if a house is on fire across the street from the lake-
Yes, it'll-
This gives you pumping capacity up to the-
Right. It'll be a mobile water point, that if we can access a road that's close by or whatever, that'll be a water point that we can establish rather quickly with high-volume water.
Okay, so it's really not a fire fighting boat?
Hmm, no.
It's primarily a, a, a water source?
Actually, actually, I should've brought some pictures with y'all tonight, maybe and gone through that a little bit better for you, but it does have two, uh, devices on it, so we can actually fight fire from the water. We can actually run a large diameter hose to a ladder truck or an engine, and we can actually fight exposure fires with a couple other remote monitors that you can run to be able to push water to protect a, adjacent household, et cetera.
Other things that the boat does, we're getting more and more boat fires on Lake Norman, which are inaccessible from land. And so these boats, these fire boats are basically being going out and, you know, making these attacks. We've actually had another county that came into Iredale to assist us with fire boats, so.
Uh, this, this boat's, you know, state of the art. You can go out there for a rack in the middle of the night, and, and it has FLIR, et cetera. So it's got a, you know, it's really got everything state of the art. The lakes never experienced anything like that before. Um, so classifying this fireboat really limits its capabilities. It's a, you know, a water point, rescue vehicle.
Is it gonna be staffed by volunteers, or will there be full-time people?
Well, there's, there's, there's gonna be a, and we're currently working on that now, but, uh, as you well know, a volunteer fireman with these firefighter one and two is no different than a paid man. We're gonna have a schedule where we'll have people actually scheduled, just like we have shifts at the fire department, so we'll know who's gonna be on that boat and who his mates will be, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I've got, I've got one more question, not related to Lake Norman, but about the proposed schedule itself.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, I had, Frank and I were talking in the background. I did want to make mention to the commissioners also that, uh, you know, we brought, uh, 350 into that boat also from outside as, as, in donations, so. And, uh, you know, we work very diligently to go to our community and try to support, you know, our fire district in our best, best of our ability. And I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, I didn't catch-
I, I just, I just have a point to make, and I, I'm not gonna take sides this evening, 'cause I don't, as I, as I stated earlier, I don't have any problem with the proposal. I think you fellows have lived up to this point, to the commitment you made, and I think it's up to this board to, uh, congratulate you and live up to the collective commitment we made earlier. But it, it may not, gentlemen, it may not be a point of contention at this point, but it has the possibility of being a point of contention. I, I noticed in your schedule that you do have the purchase of some, uh, ambulances, and I'm not taking exception to that, but merely to point out, it, you know, if this is the direction we're, we're headed, and I'm not gonna take sides on the issue, because Kevin, I spoke with you earlier, you know, on the first responder calls, or, or Mr. Warner, whoever, the Board of Commissioners, when somebody now dials 911, they're pinned in a car, you know, I'm less interested in who gets them out of the car than I am the fact that somebody gets them out of the car. But there's gonna be a point of contention sometime between first responders or the rescue squad and the first responders of the fire department. And, and I think we're gonna have to sit down and, and have some honest discussion as to what each party's role's gonna be, or we're gonna wind up paying for some of this equipment twice. I, I know, I'm not trying to, to create a problem, but I, I do know that that is a possible point of contention, and something we need to sit down and talk about at some point.
The medical vehicle that you see in the, the formula there, that is not for an ambulance or rescue, that's just for basically like a suburban-type vehicle, four-wheel drive where you can go in adverse weather.
Say that a little louder, I wanna be sure somebody hears that on the television.
All right. That will actually be for like a suburban-type vehicle to carry medical supplies and first responders in adverse weather to, the medical cause of which we run, of being first responders only.
Okay. So if you don't, if you need to transport someone, then you would call either EMS or the rest-
Okay, so if you don't, if you need to transport someone, then you would call either EMS or the rescue?
Right, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And we would not be tying up an engine company responding to that apparatus. It would actually just be a two-man engine company, or not a two-man engine company, but a two-man company responding to a four-wheel-drive vehicle versus a $350,000 apparatus.
I understand, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any more questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any motion? You guys ready for a motion?
I think so.
What is the motion supposed to say?
I guess a motion could actually include memo eight and memo nine could go on both at one time.
We're approving the purchase schedule.
As well as the purchase.
And the budget.
They have a copy of that, but you would have to, this budget amendment?
Oh, I see, yeah.
That needs to be included in your motion. If you wanna combine both together, I see no reason not to do that, but I'm just saying you do need to make sure that it does include approval of budget amendment number nine A.
Do I wanna redeem myself? Did y'all hear that? Okay. Mr. Robertson never passes up an opportunity. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment number nine A, which will encompass memos number eight and memos number nine, and will approve the schedule for replacement of vehicles related to the ISO ratings, and will approve the requested expenditures out of the fire tax fund.
Any questions regarding the motion?
There were two, aren't there two different schedules proposed?
Just one, the 2510 schedule. There were actually two that was brought in front of the fire tax board. One was a 2525, then 2510.
And we're approving the 2510s?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I'm good.
Any additional questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate, we appreciate your hard work, and again, our questions are just to promote understanding so that we understand what value the taxpayer is getting, but thank you for answering that call at three in the morning. We appreciate it, and all the Saturdays and extra time that you take to get trained and to stay certified and cook barbecue to raise money for what we don't get for you. We appreciate it, we really do, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next item is memo number 10, and it's also a request concerning the fire departments, and this has to do with the Fireman's Relief Fund, and Tracy Jackson will make that presentation.
Good evening. I'm just gonna read the memo for the benefit of the audience, so they'll know what we're talking about tonight. Ms. Blumenstein was gonna be here to present this, but I'm filling in for her. The Office of State Fire Marshal has oversight responsibilities for receiving and dispersing funds to the fire departments for deposit to each department's firefighter's relief fund. Funds to the firefighter's relief fund are derived from taxes collected from insurance companies and dispersed by the Office of the State Fire Marshal based on county population and the tax value of property located within each fire district, as reported by each county tax assessor. In order for a fire department to participate, it must be a member of the North Carolina State Firemen's Association and submit a financial statement on relief fund monies to the association. In addition, the fire conditions report must be filed annually for each volunteer fire department to the Office of the State Fire Marshal. The report of the fire conditions must be submitted by the clerk to the board or finance officer of each county, and each board of county commissioners must annually appoint two members to the firefighter's relief fund board of trustees for each volunteer fire department. This year, the report of the fire condition has to be submitted via the internet. Ms. Blumenstein requested from the volunteer fire departments the names of the board of trustees they proposed for commissioner appointment this year, and compiled the information on the attached worksheet. If a volunteer fire department recommended a different commissioner appointment than those appointed in 2009, the person being replaced is noted directly under the 2010 recommendation. Staff requests that the board approve a motion to appoint citizens to each volunteer fire department's Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, as recommended by the volunteer fire departments.
Any questions for Mr. Jackson? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint citizens to each volunteer fire department's Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, as recommended by volunteer fire departments, and enter this table into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Chairman, at your last meeting, you held a public hearing on the Schedule of Values for the 2011 revaluation. This evening, you're being requested to approve those schedules. It's broken down into two separate memos. Memo number 11 is the market schedule of values, and memo number 12 is the present use schedule. Mr. Steve Irvin, make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn, Mr. Chairman, and board members. I'm just here to request an adoption order for the market value, schedule of values that'll be used in the 2011 reevaluation. There's two different ones. I'm calling for the market value first.
Okay. You have any questions?
Request a vote from you on that.
Okay, the second motion, Mr. Irvin, would be for the present use, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'll go ahead and make the motion for memo 11, which is market schedule of values, to adopt the uniform market schedule of values for the 2011 revaluation.
Okay, any questions regarding that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, Mr. Irvin.
Okay, and just like memo 11, I'm requesting a adoption of the order of the present use schedule that will be used in the 2011 reappraisal. Mr. Irvin, just for the record, there's been some rumors flying around for a couple weeks. Are you proposing a 22% tax increase? Mr. Keel, I appreciate you bringing that up. I am not proposing a cross-the-board 22% tax increase. That is somewhat misleading. There is a increase of 22% on the base value of farmland under the use value. It will be going from $480 an acre to $590 an acre, which if you transfer that or you compare that using the present tax rate, that will be about 50 cents an acre increase. But that's only on that acreage, not all acreage in the county, and not on all, not on any improvements. And could you explain why you're doing that? Give the reason and rationale for that? Yes, the use-value schedule of values is based upon a recommendation made by the Use Value Board in the Department of Revenue. And that Use Value Board surveys all counties and develops a schedule based on rents, high-end rents, average rents, and low-end rents. Based upon the average rents, that transfers into the $590. And just for information, by the way, for average cropland, that's the lowest value in the state, recommended by the board. And that recommendation was made in Raleigh by the Department of Revenue? That's correct. Based on statistical data to try to level all taxes across the state. Is that fair, or, you can say it better than me, maybe? That is correct, except it's based upon individual county information, so they can be consistent throughout the state, yes. Okay.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm gonna beg your indulgence sometimes in good humor to kid one another for making long-winded speeches up here. However, in this case, Mr. Irvin, if you'd indulge me to, I think I've earned the right to say this.
You have.
Mr. Chairman, early in the morning on Friday, September 24th, the phone began to ring, ring at 1112 Shalfton Avenue with calls from concerned citizens who had heard that the county staff had requested and the commissioners were considering a 22% property tax increase. I was told that the information had been communicated at a tea party meeting in Moxville on the prior evening of Thursday, the 23rd. Despite the fact that I had to stop what I was doing many times that day to correct and correctly advise each person that called exactly what had actually happened in the briefing, I remained calm. I went home Friday evening totally exhausted, having accomplished nothing toward providing towards my own livelihood. The calls resumed Saturday and continued through Monday mid-morning. Tuesday, they resumed at a rate equal to the previous Saturday. I do not mention this merely to complain, but to make clear the point. When someone speaks and does not accurately report what has actually transpired, it negatively impacts the lives of other people, specifically mine. I believe that I convinced each person that called that they had been misinformed, and I was gratified to find that every caller still retained their confidence in me personally, this board collectively, and our appraisers' office. Let me repeat the count of actually what was reported during the briefing on September 21st. The assessor's office did not request a 22% tax increase, because it is not their job to request a tax increase. If a tax increase is to be requested, this request will be made during the presentation of the county budget. If a change in the rate of taxation is requested, the county manager and he alone will make such a request, because he is the chief financial officer in the many, among his other duties, he's the chief financial officer of the county. What was presented at the assessor's office was a schedule of evaluations for real property in Iredell County. This presentation was about the methodology by which property values are to be arrived at. The staff explained the logic and the methods employed in arriving at their standards. In general, if the standards are adopted, commercial property will probably see a net decrease in evaluation of somewhere around seven to eight percent. Higher-priced residential properties will see a decline. Medium-priced homes will probably be near the previous appraised value. After a suffering decline as a result of the collapse of the real estate market since 2007, these properties have seen some appreciation in value. Some ask what about all the foreclosures that must be depressing values of medium-priced homes? But North Carolina statute, if I can read it, Mr. Chairman, North Carolina statute 105283, if I can read that, "All property, real and personal, shall, as far as practical, be appraised or valued at its true market value." And true market value is stated as, "When in this subchapter, the words 'true value' shall be interpreted as meaning market value, that is, the price estimated in terms of money at which the property would change hands between a willing and financially able buyer and a willing seller, neither being under any compulsion to buy or sell, and both having reasonable knowledge of all the uses to which the property may be adapted." Simply put, a property under distress cannot be counted because the seller is under duress. So that effectively includes that, and I think, I think there's a good reason for that. I won't get into it, it's a lengthy explanation. Nevertheless, I am confident that sellers consider an offer realizing that it is a buyer's market and that there is no upward pressure on the price of real estate, which is a contributing factor toward the stagnation and depreciation of such properties. Which brings us to the present use value, or farm use evaluation, which I believe was the origin of the widespread misunderstanding. Farm use value is calculated by dividing the average rent price per acre by the capitalization rate. Presently, the average rental rate that we're now using under our present schedule of evaluations, not this one, but the one that is in effect at this moment, that rent rate is $31.33 per acre. If you divide this by the current cap rate of 6.5, you get a value of $482, which Mr. Irvin and his staff had previously rounded off to $480. A survey conducted by the staff revealed a current rental price of $38.30 per acre. If you divide that by 6.5, it equals a value of $590 per acre. This is indeed a 22% to 23% increase in evaluation, but only for farm use land, which is rented and resulted from a commensurate increase in the price the land can be rented for. Just as a commercial property located in an area seeing an increase in housing and consequential customer base is able to command a higher rent price, resulting in an increase in the value of that said property. Now, you may, you may say, what about farmers who own land but do not rent it? Relief can come in the raising of the cap rate, but only marginally. Because in his presentation, Mr. Irvin correctly, while he did not print out the statute, he correctly reported the statute, and I'll read it. "The capitalization rate for agricultural land and horticultural land must be no less than six percent and no more than seven percent." Mr. Chairman, I will assume that the comments made leading folks to believe that everyone in Iredell County was about to be subjected to a 22% property increase was the result of an honest misunderstanding by the speaker or an innocent misinterpretation by the listeners. Such a mistake is forgivable, even though it hijacked my life for the better part of a week. If the comments were made in an attempt to gain political advantage, I take umbrage personally. And on behalf of this board, but not just this board, every commissioner that I have served with in the past, they have been honest people who have worked tirelessly to save the taxpayers' money, resulting in one of the lowest tax rates in the state. I just wanna clarify that, ladies and gentlemen. There's no across-the-board 22% property tax increase ever been requested, suggested, recommended, or even considered by this board. I appreciate your indulgence, but with all due respect, gentlemen, I think I earned the right to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Irvin, did you have anything else, or do we still have a matter to finish with you?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I may add one thing, I think we were all, probably not to the extent of Mr. Johnson, but we were all subjected to quite a few of these phone calls, and I think I can speak on behalf of Mr. Johnson and the rest of the members that we appreciate everybody that called, because we know you're being vigilant, and we know that you don't want tax increases any more than any member of this board. And I got to meet a lot of nice people during those conversations, and they do take time out of our life, I know Mr. Johnson did too. We appreciate you calling, we appreciate you being concerned. It's unfortunate that you got bad information, but we do appreciate you thinking about it.
Thanks, Mr. Keel.
I don't, I don't mind talking to voters, it's just after you repeat yourself about 75 times, it does become a bit wearisome. But I enjoy talking to everybody.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, anyone else, any comments?
Motion to approve...
I would like, here's the concern I have. I have no problem by which the methodology was arrived at, at all. I think if you talk about residential property, commercial property, or present use, I told Mr. Irvin, I'll say this publicly, if I was gonna argue about his rent rate based upon my limited survey, which is not as extensive as yours, I'd say you may be a little low on your rent rate. However, what does concern me is people who are engaged in the occupation of agriculture who do not claim rent from their land. They will see a subsequent increase... They will see a subsequent increase in this with actually no way to reclaim it other than the commodity that they produce. And I think, I don't think it's any surprise to anybody, I think the people who have suffered the most in this economy and because of market conditions are dairy farmers. They're commanding a very low price for their product right now. It would not cost the county a great deal of money and revenue, but I think it'd be an expression of goodwill on our part if we did increase the capitalization rate from 6.5 to 7. To 7, that's the maximum attainable by law. I do think in areas of residential growth like ours, where farmland is, good farmland is getting harder and harder to find in larger tracts of rent, I think at some point the legislature needs to revisit that and raise the ceiling on cap rate if you continue to see huge increases in value. But at the present time, 7% is the max we can go. And I say that because that's, not to disparage anything Mr. Irvin's staff's done, I think they've applied good logic to it. This is, I think this is a philosophical decision as far as the establishment of the capitalization rate. So I would like to offer that motion if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson, let me finish this before we get to that point.
Okay.
Mr. Kedel. Motion you had, did we finish that motion?
Uh, I...
Mrs., did we finish the last motion, please?
Well, I don't know which one comes first.
Number 12.
Mr. Commissioner Johnson's motion or adoption of the order, the schedule?
I'll make my adoption, my motion for adoption of the schedule as planned.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion?
That would be a cap rate of 6.5?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions regarding that motion? If not, I'll, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if I could offer a motion that the capitalization rate be raised from 6.5 to 7, which is the maximum allowed by law, it will give minimal tax relief to folks in the ag community, but nevertheless, it's the most we can do under current legislation.
Okay. That's your motion. Any questions regarding the motion? Hold on, favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
Specifically, I need to transfer that into a dollar amount, and it comes out an odd figure of $547.14. May I ask that we make the figure $550?
That's agreeable to me, Mr. Chairman. I'll amend my motion that we adopt a rental price per acre of $550 per acre.
Okay. Is that, hold on, if you may, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, next item is memo number 13. We have a request to approve budget amendment number 10. And quickly, let me explain what this is. As in the Facility Services Department, when the budget was prepared for the current year, funds were budgeted for part of a year for a position, but not for the complete year. And since that time, it has become necessary to have a person in the position for the full year. And so therefore, what we're requesting is that budget amendment that would transfer out of the operating budget into the salary budget, $41,400 to be able to have this extra person in Facility Services for the full year. It was really an oversight at that time. It should have been included in the original budget, was not, and so therefore, it is necessary for us to come at this time and request your approval of budget amendment number 10.
Any questions? Are in favor, motion there?
Motion to approve budget amendment number 10.
Hold on, favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I have a request from the Sheriff's Department to, well, Marty's here, so I'll just let him tell me. My mic is, I get it mixed up.
The first item is a request from the Sheriff's Office to use $42,398 of seized funds to purchase two used vehicles. These vehicles will be used in special operations where we really don't need new cars, and they will be replacing cars that are already being used in that unit.
So you're not adding to your fleet, you're just replacing two?
Correct.
Any other questions? Are in favor, motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion approved. Hold on, favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
The next item is a request to sole source agreement with Alliance Auto Gas to purchase propane conversion units for our vehicles. I missed the last meeting when this was originally presented. I think there were some questions that maybe weren't answered at night. So I'll try to go back and bring us up to where we are and then what we're asking for tonight. Earlier this year, we asked to move $214,000 of seized funds to do a propane conversion project on our vehicle fleet. With the intention of applying for an NC Solar grant, that if received, we would use those funds to do that. We received the grant to convert 13 vehicles, and those vehicles are to be operated in the non-attainment area in the south end of the county. The sheriff has since felt like maybe we need to do the 13 first and not do the original 50 until we see how the 13, if they meet our goals and expectations. And then we would go back and maybe do additional cars. So what we're asking to do is, we have accepted the grant, we're asking to use $18,624 as our match of the grant, which would still come from that $214,000 of seized funds that we transferred. The remainder of that money would be put back in to seized funds. We would not spend that money. Getting into this, Dean and I, Dean Lell, we found out that there are basically two conversion systems that can be used on a vehicle. One is a PRIN system, which is Alliance Auto Gas. The other is an EMCO system, which is from US Clean Energy, I think. I think that's the name of the company. The problem, the reason we're having to do a sole source is the PRINs unit, the Alliance Auto Gas unit is the only unit that is certified by the EPA to be put on 2010 Crown Victorious. And we will be doing the conversion on some of our 2010s that are in the non-attainment area. So that's the reason we're asking for the sole source with Alliance Auto Gas to purchase their PRIN system. Hope I did a good job on that. Because it is confusing. Dean, if you have anything you need.
It says Alliance is going to furnish one filling station. Will there only be one in the county to fill these cars?
Originally, going with the 50 units, we were going to have three fueling stations, one in the south end, one in Statesville, one in the north end of the county. Since we're going with only the 13 grant vehicles, which have to be in the non-attainment area, which is the south end of the county, we feel like at this time with only 13 units, we only need one fueling station, that being in the south end of the county.
So basically, those cars will stay down in the south end?
The predominant, yes. Other than coming back and forth to the jail or to the office routinely.
Okay.
But most of their time will be spent in the south end of the county.
Just out of curiosity, what's the range of one of these vehicles?
The mileage is equal to, maybe just a little bit better than gas.
300, 400 miles?
Yes. And the reason, but the main reason that we're doing it, other than just the benefits of the emissions, reducing the amount of emissions, is also hoping to reduce the cost in maintenance as well as fuel costs.
Any additional questions? If not, I'll, in favor, motion?
Chairman, I move that we agreed to the contract with Alliance Auto Gas and approve the use of $18,624 of seized funds to cover the grant match and complete the project.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? Hold on, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item has to do with a request to declare a 1989 Sunshine Modular Building, which is the old EMS base in Mooresville, and declare that surplus and authorize us to go ahead and demolish and remove that. That is a modular building that was purchased when we had to move EMS base out of the old Lower Ence Hospital. And we purchased that and used it until such time as we moved EMS base into the old Health Department building. And the building is really not worthy to continue to use, but we need your permission to declare its surplus and to demolish it.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, there is another portion of that, and that is to waive the tipping fees. Since the Solid Waste Department is an enterprise fund, we are requesting that you waive the tipping fees on that because that's where we'll take the demolished ones home to.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the manager. Why are we waiving tipping fees again?
Well, the general fund would have to pay the, we'd be taking the money out of one pocket and putting it into the other pocket, so we're just saying...
Well, I mean, since they're an enterprise fund, isn't it fair to them to keep an accurate accounting of that?
We've done it for other nonprofit organizations, so since we're a nonprofit organization, I thought the rules would apply to us as well.
Yeah, I would disagree with that too, but I just thought I'd bring the subject up. I mean, I think we ought to, if we're gonna make them be an enterprise fund, we ought to pay them for what they do and recognize those funds. But I'm not gonna fight about it, but it's just my opinion.
Okay, the floor is now open for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval and not waive the tipping fees.
Okay, any questions regarding that motion? Hold on, in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of, and we waive the tipping fees.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion? Hold on, in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Okay, Mr. Lell, purchasing agent will present memo number 17.
Good evening, gentlemen. For several years, Aridale County has participated in a purchasing card program with, directly with Bank of America. Program is adequate, it does serve our needs. However, there's a lot of benefits that it does not allow us, that we could be taking advantage of if we were to move over to a Bank of America purchasing card program sponsored through the State of North Carolina Convenience Contract. The Finance Director and I have recently reviewed the state contract and found that it does offer several benefits that could help us immensely, one of which is that we would get a 1.32% user rebate on the total annual spend based on what we would spend. The 1.32 spend, however, can change based on statewide purchasing under that state contract purchase program. For us, over the last 12 months, that would have amounted to about a $5,400 rebate this past year. The program also offers a program called ePayable. This program would allow us to pay certain large dollar expenditures through this purchasing card program. Those expenditures would add to our annual spend and would increase our rebate from that program. The program also allows us to do web-based administration and management. That in itself would be an immense help to staff. It would allow us to be able to supervise the account online in real time as opposed to having to do it manually, by telephone, by paperwork fax, as we're doing now. Both the Finance Director and I do recommend this program, and we would request approval that we be able to apply for the program. We also request the Finance Director be approved to initiate and assign the application to start the process.
Any questions?
Is Bank of America the only bank that provides any kind of service similar to this?
No, sir, there are a lot of purchasing card programs out there.
Have we bid this out or asked anybody else to?
We haven't bid this out, sir, not necessarily because we can't. State contract has been bid out. Bank of America did provide them the best rates. We could still bid that out if we're directed to. One of the advantages of going with the Bank of America State Contract program is that we would be transitioning from one program to another program without having to move everything, all of the logistics involved with that.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Lell.
Thank you.
In favor, motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? Hold on, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
And, Mr. Chairman, the next item is a motion to authorize the Chairman of the Board to sign a proclamation resolving that Aridale County Board of Commissioners proclaim October the 3rd through the 9th of 2010 as the National Long-Term Care Residence Rights Week. And this request is coming from Cindy Kincaid, who's the Ombudsman from Centralina, to recognize National Long-Term Care Residence Rights Week.
Okay. Any other motion?
So moved.
Okay, any questions regarding the motion? Hold on, in favor, please say aye.
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 Chairman, I move we adopt the minutes.
Motion to adopt the minutes? Hold on, in favor, please say aye.
That concludes the administrative matters, Mr. Chairman.
Announcement of waivers occurring on boards and commissions? There are none at this time. Appointments to boards and commission? National Home Advisory Committee, one appointment. One appointment. Anyone? Do we have a name?
Move that we postpone the next meeting.
Motion to postpone? Hold on, in favor, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman, the item, the chapter on unfinished business, I did want to bring this to your attention, and you should have this before you, is a request to approve the salary for the new Social Services Director. And just to bring your attention that, there is a $16.46 difference between what was presented to you in the previous session and what it's gonna take to actually place that person on the, a grade and step. In order to do that, it requires 40... In order to do that, it requires $16.46, so I wanted to make sure I brought that to your attention.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, has a new director been determined and announced?
Yes, he was...
You have? I missed it, sorry. Okay, very well.
You have a message?
The person that was presented to you in closed session did accept that, did accept that offer from the DSS Board.
The person, okay.
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith from Orange County. Okay, very well.
Okay. Have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we set the salary for the new Social Services Director at 96,291.96.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any questions regarding the motion? Hold on, favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? New business? County Manager's report?
Chairman, I don't have anything other than a conclusion. I would like, again, to ask our new HR Director to come up and meet each of you personally, just so you'll know who she is and she'll know who you are.
Okay.
At the conclusion of the meeting.
All right, no closed session, am I right, am I correct? Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, hold on, favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.